And we would like to open the meeting with prayer, and then I'd like you to remain standing if you would, and join us in the place of the flag. We're gonna call on one of our local ministers, Robert Conant, to lead us in prayer place.
Father, we do come to you this morning, Lord, as we gather together here at this place to make decisions for our county, God. I pray that you give a wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. God, I ask you especially the best, blessed Greg, he's oversees all this, God. I, I pray for his step in the will of God, to do exactly what you wanted to do, lead this county the way it should be leading. God, to be the man of God that he claims to be. God, I ask you bless all of our officials that is here this morning, God, to, to lead us in the, in the right way. Well, we love you and pray, and I thank you, Jesus, amen.
Amen. Join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Robert, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Uh, we do have a forum today, so we can conduct business. We have no scheduled public hearing, but we do have a public comment scheduled, and that gentleman is running a few minutes late, so we'll come back to that, uh, a little later in the agenda. Under awards and presentations, and then public comments from other elected officials, we're gonna recognize a sheriff first, and invite him to come forward and make comments as he chooses, and also, I think he wants to, uh, recognize, uh, an officer, or a citizen or somebody, tell us about it, yeah?
You know, uh, part of, part of our duty as officers, whether you're a sheriff's deputy, or a police officer, or you work for the district attorney's office, is to make sure that our, when, when we, when we bite, that we have teeth in our mouth. And that means being able to put people in jail through the, the arrest process. Uh, we were running the stats for the year twenty twenty-one, and, uh, it was phenomenal how this one particular officer actually got out and, and done his job without a complaint, and he, he led this whole county with, uh, with a number of arrests, uh, surpassing many entire towns. Uh, he's a hard worker, uh, he's a friend of mine, and a friend to this profession. He's also a friend of the people of this county, and, uh, I wanted to recognize him today. John? This is a, a small token of my appreciation. Uh, be it known that John Williamson's work ethic and sense of duty caused him to lead the entirety of Covington County among his peers for the most arrests made in twenty twenty-one. His hard work and tenacity exemplify the spirit of a good law officer. His efforts to bring offenders to justice shall not go unnoticed. As always, his ability to find the offender, communicate, and attention to detail credits the profession of what a good police officer should be. I hereby award John Williamson with the Sheriff's Medal for his accomplishments.
Congratulations, John. You wanna, you wanna give a speech or take a picture?
I'll take a picture. All right, y'all, one, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Thanks, Sheriff, yeah. John, we do appreciate you coming and, uh, letting us be a part of that. Uh, appreciate your good work.
I'm willing to have it.
That's fine. Go and get to work, look at there, he's after them already.
Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
Other elected officials, Chuck, you have anything you wanna share?
Everything's doing good, the revenue off this, we finished out the final settlement, you had to Montgomery, another review of the entry of the balance. As far as we know, we can, um, collect it as well, I believe, that we talked about. Are you here?
Good.
Yeah, I'll tell y'all next meeting about, uh, upcoming year, what we're projecting to collect.
Okay. Okay, good. Certainly, thank you, appreciate you, your attendance today. Probably Judge is usually with us, I don't see her here today. At a conference, okay. Uh, consent agenda, excuse me, commissioners, you, uh, seen the minutes from the June twenty-eighth meeting, and you also have in front of you a, a list of the cash payable and payroll for the month of June. We'll ask if, uh, there are any corrections to note in any of that, or is there a motion to approve those items?
I'll make a motion to approve them.
All right.
I'll say.
Motion and second, anybody have anything you wanna note? A correction to make, if not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, those items are covered, uh. I'm assuming, uh, Mr. Whitaker, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Why don't we recognize you at this time, we went past where you were supposed to be here, we-
Yeah, we turned around this morning.
That's all right. Come, come on up, we'll ask you to come to the podium here if you will. Ms. Whitaker asked to be on the agenda, sir?
It's a pleasure to be here, I appreciate you guys, uh, letting us come, come by today and take up some of your time. My name's Travis Whitaker, uh, I'm with BJ Cardwell, he's director of the food giveaway program in Coffey County, Dale County, and Geneva County, and we were hoping we'd come down and talk to y'all this morning about starting a giveaway program here in, uh, Covington County. And it won't cost you a thing, all we need to do is ask you for a place that, that we can, uh, can have a semi truck to come to from Mobile with the food on there, and we can, uh, get it off and distribute the food and get, let the cars go through there and pick it up and go. It's pre, it's that simple, and, uh, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. BJ, he can, uh, give you all the details here. Thank you, thank you again for letting us come.
That's fine, come right ahead.
Today, I appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
For your time.
BJ, is that what?
BJ, yes.
BJ, what's the last name?
BJ Cardwell.
Cardwell, all right.
Cardwell.
Like you said, thank y'all for letting us come, what we're here for is to try to help this county, like we did Coffey County, we're trying to start a community service food bank here, it's a few food pantry actually, for just one day a month. Uh, we started the one in Coffey County in October twenty-third of twenty eighteen. Lot of giveaways, the COVID never did stop us, never did slow us down, we just kept doing it. Then we decided to try to start one in Geneva County, went down, met with the commission, they, I mean, they, you know, you're a little hesitant, 'cause you, you don't know what, what's at stake there, but, but, uh, they did manage to let us use their building, their complex, 'cause you gotta have a place to put the food, because eight out of ten months, or twelve months, it, it rains or storms or something, and so people need to be inside, the food has to, uh, we have a place for it. But we've been able to give away almost a million pound of food in Coffey County since twenty eighteen. We got people from Covington County that come over there, Dale County, we don't refuse anybody, uh, we probably got twenty from Covington County. So it's a good time to try to get one started in, in, in Covington County. See, the, uh, USDA provides a certain amount of food at a reduced cost, I didn't say free, reduced cost, and the churches get together, and, uh, we have a level in Coffey County that's support hours, and we started from scratch. We went up to Pike County, our seniors going up there, uh, picking up food, wife and I went up there, we said, why don't we start one in Coffey County? And so we managed to get it started, the commission works real good with us, and if you got any questions, you know, our commissioners, county commissioners in Coffey County be glad to answer any questions, they, they, they support us, uh, they, uh, since the beginning, 'cause they, they see what, how, what it does to help the people, a lot of people in need, and especially this, this day and time. Now, we went over to Ozark to their county commission, uh, they were real receptive, and they did agree to let us use the complex, but the only problem is we waited so late until the food is pretty much, is going somewhere else, where it should be coming to Dale County, we should've done it a long time ago, but, uh, it's maybe by the fall, we can get it started over there. But your, the food here in Covington County will come and, be coming from Theodore, Alabama, coastal food bank in Theodore. And like I said, it, it's, uh, it's a, it, I didn't say free, but you take like meat, uh, a nickel a pound, uh, food, a lot of the food, they, we get a fifty-three foot reefer every month full of food for Coffey County, and also Geneva County. Geneva County's having theirs today. When we first went down there, they kinda were a little hesitant, but they, they really saw how it's really helped that county. And, uh, it's been a little over two years now, and they, like I said, they're having theirs today, uh, normally I would've been down there. But we're just here to try to see if we can, if you got some kind of place we can use to keep us out of the weather, uh, if we went and rented a place, I mean, it come right out of your, uh, right out of your money that you get from the churches, I mean, we don't wanna do that, we want a place where, uh, like Coffey County's gotten, Geneva County's gotten, probably you got here, a, a facility that we can count on, it'll be there month after month after month. Uh, you gotta have a need to start with, which I think we got it, I don't think you've got any question about that, people need the food. Uh, and, and, and also, you know, you gotta have volunteers, it takes forty-eight volunteers to distribute the food, uh, if you do it, you know, like it, like it ought to be done. Then you got, you gotta have a forklift, and what we're willing to do is, is furnish the forklift, the volunteers, and try to, uh, and we got several churches here, and, and, uh, I've talked to several pastors, and I, I don't know how sincere they are, but the, the first step we gotta have is a place to have it. So before we go collect money from them to try to, and it's all nonprofit, even this yard or anything, we do it all nonprofit, there's nothing going in our pockets, uh, there's never been a penny spent at either place, Geneva or Coffey County, that hadn't gone to buy food. And, uh, we have the sheets here, we usually get about twenty-two, three thousand pound of food per month, and that's a lot of food to divide up, if you haven't ever seen that, that much in one line there, that's, that's a lot of food. But we're here to, we're here to help this county if we can, and certainly if, if you guys or ladies and gentlemen can help us with a facility, or you know where one is, or someplace we can do it, we'd be glad to try to get the ball rolling. Uh, like I said, this food is coming, it shouldn't be coming here, it's going somewhere else. We need that, because Theodore, they, they, they provide food in, uh, uh, Mississippi, Alabama, and Louisiana. So we're missing ours, see, and they say their trucks coming by this way a couple of times, there's some churches in, 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 in this county here that, that, uh, that get food from them, and we're not trying to discourage the churches from doing what they're doing, we want them to keep doing what they're doing, but we can buy the food so much cheaper when you buy it as a, at a county. Covington County Community, Coffey County, you know, the whole countywide, and, and, uh, like I said, the churches don't, a lot of them don't know that. We had to learn it the hard ways, but these people, I just, I just hope y'all can furn, furnish a place to, uh, month after month, to have a, a food bank and a food pantry, and, uh, if we can help in any way, if you got any questions, or if you wanna look at any of the, any of the paperwork that we've got here, uh, here's, here's our last month's, and we got, uh, twenty thousand three hundred eighty-five pound of food at a cost of seven hundred eighty-six dollars. Now, where are you gonna find food any cheaper than that? We got five thousand four hundred twenty-six pound of meat, it cost us two hundred seventy-one dollars. And what this meat is, is, it's, it's something that, like Publix, they freeze it before it goes out of date. Well, you put a stir in your freezer, you know, it's, it can be there six months, still be good. But anyway, they freeze this meat, and, and, uh, and they, they, they inspect it before they, before they, uh, before they send it out to us. Now, I don't say all of it's, you know, perfect, but, but, uh, most of it's good food, and, and, and people really, they have a lot of canned goods, they, now, like I said, I've talked with the, uh, people in Theodore, and they're ready, now they're, it's a little more expensive, uh, you could feed a hundred and fifty, I think you said a hundred and fifty, for like seven hundred fifty dollars a month. So hopefully, we can get enough churches, if we can get a, a facility to do that, and I will keep, keep you, thank y'all for letting us come, and we, like I said, we're here to help, help, any question, question?
Do y'all have a criteria that these people have to go by to come by getting the food?
Yes, we do, we have applications they have to fill out, and, uh, and, and then we approve it, and when we approve it, and then they're eligible to pick up the next month.
And roughly how big, 'cause you don't distribute it straight off the back of the truck, does, do you have to put it into a building?
I have to put, and it has to have a concrete place where, it, it, you gotta be sitting on, it can't be sitting on the ground. Now, up in, uh, Pike County, they got a pole barn up there behind a church, but in Coffey County, they, we use the arena there, uh, extension office down there anyway, and, and in Geneva County, same way, now, they were a little hesitant about in Geneva County, but, look, we're there, and when we leave the facility, it looks, I mean, you wouldn't even never, ever know there was a food bank after we leave there, we clean up everything, you know, we leave any trash or nothing, we, we, we make sure that everything's cleaned up. But see, we, we have boxes, we have to dispose of, and, and, and in Coffey County, they let the trash truck from Enterprise come over, and they take all the boxes for us, so that, that helps us out a lot right there. And actually, they, in New Brockton, they, they furnish the forklift, the EMA director let us use the forklift, so, I mean, that, they help us out any way they can, and we appreciate that, and if y'all can help us, and like I said, I got a forklift, uh, if we, if we can get it started, he says in Mobile or Theodore that, that they're ready at any time, you know, that we, we, if we can get a, any, any more questions?
Yeah, Mr. Cardwell, there, let me ask you this, there, there's a local group that does food distribution, the Christian Service Center, that is the Covington County Baptist Association.
Yes, sir.
Uh, do, do you know if they are using the same supplier you're using, or do you know what their operation is like, and how yours would complement or complete with that?
I know, I know in Coffey County, they do, they, the Wiregrass Food Bank in Coffey County, they, uh, the, the Christian Mission uses the same one, and other churches use it, they provide food for a lot of surrounding area, but they're supposed to be able to provide food for, uh, all the surrounding counties, uh, to Pike County, back to Dulton, Henry, Dale, Coffee, but Coffee's as far as they come this way.
So your, your operations just in, uh, in addition to the, uh, the Christians?
Yes, sir.
Mission and enterprise or?
As a matter of fact, if we have food left over, we're used to, uh, when we first started, we had a little leftover, and we'd always let them come pick up what was left, the Christian Mission and Enterprise, but when, now, we've got so many, we had eight hundred applications, we got eight hundred applications on file now, which they don't all come, but we order food for two fifty, and we've been fortunate enough to keep the price down. And I know, I know, like Theodore, his is more, his is like seven fifty to feed a hundred and fifty people, ours is seven eighty-six to feed two hundred and fifty. So I guess, I think if you work with them, you know, after you, after you order enough food from them, that they, they're probably, they give us a lot of stuff that we don't have to pay for, if you, if you look on this sheet right here, and I can pass it around here, a lot of this stuff is no charge, yeah, they don't charge anything for it, and that's the good thing about being countywide. Uh, the Wiregrass has been real good to us, I tell you, they, it's just amazing. Uh, but you, all those canned goods that you see, that they collect in Dulton there, that, a lot of them come to us, and in Geneva County. Uh, and when we started Geneva County, you got to have a minimum of five hundred dollars used to, um, but now, down there, in Theodore's can be seven fifty, but like I said, we got to work on churches and make sure that that happens, but, uh, take first things first, if you got a facility, then you can go with the rest of it. Any more questions?
Somebody else? What kind of hours or timeframe do you distribute the food, is it just like one day a week, or?
No, it's, it's, it's one day a month, ours is the last Tuesday of the month, and if we had one here, it would be the third Tuesday of the month. The one in Geneva's on the second Tuesday of the month, which is today, and, uh-
And the way you're describing it is, you need a facility to house it and distribute it one day, and then you're gone until you come back?
Three hours later, once that truck gets there, three hours, you won't even know we ever had one. Now, we would like to, to be able to, the forklift, whatever we unload, we would like to be able to leave it at the facility, so we didn't have to transfer it back and forth, you know, that would be, that would be a, a good thing right there, just, and Geneva, we have to leave it on the outside, but we do that, yeah, so, uh, uh, that would be another request that we, we would need to, to ask about.
Did you ask about the size of our facility, what, what size facility would you require?
Uh, well, it really doesn't matter as long as you can, uh, a fifty-three foot trailer is, it, it's, it's, it's probably eighty feet long time you, time you unload it, 'cause you put it in little pallets and just, and then people come here, and you have to have a little space between them, and they come down and break it down. Uh, it's quite a job, I tell you, it's, 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 you, you, and people, they just volunteer and come, you don't call them or anything, uh, most of the time, they just, they just show up, and people see that need, and we have a lot of, uh, high school senior, their community service hours, they'll come, out of New Brockton there, and Enterprise, and, and we'll sign for, offer their community service hours, so that, they, they like that as well. Any more questions?
Susan, what you got?
The money that you raise here is, uh, the food is coming from this county right, and the volunteers.
Right.
All kinds of it.
Well, no, I think necessarily, we, we have, what we do is we go to Geneva, and we work down there, our volunteers do, a lot of them do. And they come down, up to New Brockton and work, 'cause a lot of them retired and stuff, a lot of people from Sampson come, they, we have, uh, some days we have just enough, sometimes we have more than enough, you know, we just, we, we've been blessed, and, uh,
But the money that you raise here, that, if there's extra money that you get from Covington County, it will go to another county.
No. The money that's raised in Covington County will stay- Everything stays here, yeah. What we do is, in, in, in Coffey County, we go through the Baptist Association, so the money doesn't be falling, it doesn't fall through everybody's hands. When you got a donation to make, we tell you to take it, the Coffee Baptist Association, they do the five oh three C for us, we just use their five oh three C. Uh, they volunteer to do that, and it saves us a lot of aggravation as well. And when you bring a check, and then you, you hand it to me, I, it's, it's going straight to them, or, or a few, I tell most people, if you're gonna donate, you know, go ahead and just, just take the Baptist Association, that's, I, I swear I'm taking it anyway. But I've had people that come up to me, and one tick of time, and the fellow said, you're hard-filling to get a hold of, I said, what you mean? He said, I want to donate to the food bank. Well, I, I didn't, you know, you didn't think much about that, and, uh, he, I said, just go to the Baptist Association, and, and he donated twelve hundred dollars, that one fellow did, and I've had him to donate a thousand dollars. And, uh, so that, ours, it started from scratch, I mean, we putting our nickels and dimes together to get five hundred dollars, and we, and we got it started, and, and now, if we didn't get a donation for three years, we could, you know, we've been blessed, the good Lord blessed us, and that's the way, that's what, that's the way it'll do here, once people catch on, and they see, and the churches obligate, then that's why we'd rather have a church obligate, because, well, church tells you they're gonna do it every year, they're gonna support it, and then you pretty well count it, but if a person just makes a one-time donation, little difference, you know, he might not make another donation, but the churches, we, we've been blessed, that, uh, I know our men's group in our church, uh, they didn't wanna do it either, they didn't wanna, and I, and, uh, we had a discussion about it, and I said, what if it don't work, I said, well, I'll pay you money back, but it did work. Thank God it did work, and, uh, it's helped a lot of folks. I did a few that slipped through the crack once in a while, people that really don't need that, but you see a Cadillac, and you say, well, he's got a Cadillac, but you don't know that that person, we let them pick up for people that are not able, disabled, you know, can't get out of the house, and some of them, we, you know, deliver them, we have, we have one girl come from Dulton to Geneva, and also, uh, in, in Coffey County, and, and there's people in, in the towns, and she'll just deliver it to them, you know, just, and, and, we just have a lot of good volunteers, people that, that really, once you see it, and you see it in action, you'll see, you, you'll see the goodness of it, you know, and, uh, we're here to serve, you, you know, Jesus came to serve, you know, and, and that's what, that's what we ought to be, we ought to be wanting to help somebody, you know, and that's what we wanna do. We're not, like I said, we're not asking you for any money, we're not asking you, all we want is a facility, and I don't, it's not gonna start overnight, okay? It, it'll, it'll take it a, a little while to get started, uh, like in Dale County, we're set up now, when the food gets ready, then we, then we, then we're ready. So we're trying to get more churches involved, uh, and hopefully, we get the, the Covington Baptist Association to take care of the financial part of it, and, and, uh, I, I think it'd work well that way.
I've got, I'm sorry, I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
I, I missed the name of your organization, what was the name of it?
It's Coffey County Community Church Mobile Food Pantry. And this would be Cov, you just add Covington County Community Church Mobile Food Pantry.
Okay, so are you against working with what we already have here already?
No, no.
We already have one in Andale, Georgia, on the Florella.
Right.
So would you be willing to just take advantage of those three locations?
Well, what we do is we have, we have, like in, like in Sampson, we have one church there that comes and picks up for fifty families, which is a good thing, and that's the way it would happen, we, you know, send your church man, or whatever you got, and, and pick up for whatever you, you know, wherever, how many applications you got filled out, so we-
But I mean, would you, instead of having a facility just for you guys, would you take that food and divide it up into our three that we already have? That's what I'm asking.
What we do is we, we, all right, here's the thing about that, if you got somebody that don't come to your church, they ain't getting any.
What else do you?
If you have somebody that doesn't come to your church, they ain't, they're not getting any, you might have somebody way back in the woods that doesn't build a church, see? That's, that's the thing about having it in one location, that one day a month, uh, we have people that, you know, that, if we, we did that, we couldn't, they wouldn't ever get a, get any, you know?
This, but this is not churches, this is facilities, that doesn't have really anything to do with the churches, they're just funded by the churches.
Yeah, well, that's the way this would be funded by the churches, but-
Yeah.
But it would be just a, it'd be their opportunity, uh, to come, they, if they were, if they picked up at your place and came here, it'd be, it'd be okay, it'd be okay with us, I, I, but we just want to feed the people that, that need, that need the food. We have some that, that, in, uh, they pick up for churches, and we'll let them come to Geneva and pick up, and we'll let them come to Coffey County and pick up, because we know where it's going, you know, we know, yeah. Uh, but we're not trying to cut out any churches, no, uh, we want the church to keep doing what they're doing, and this won't have any effect on, 'cause he told, he told me, the guy in Theodore, that, that he does, does have some churches up here, that he, he comes, makes a couple of trips a week up here. And, and, uh, and I told him, I said, we don't wanna bother that, he said, it won't have any effect on that right there.
Mr. Cardwell, we, we appreciate you and Mr. Whitaker coming, and appreciate the good efforts that y'all are making in these neighboring counties, and appreciate you offering that to us, why don't you let, uh, let the commission kind of review what you've shared with us, and, and then we'll get back with one of you, the information I have is for you, is that okay to contact us with?
Yes, sir, that's fine.
All right, I think.
Is there a timeframe? To, to get in line for this?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Like a timeframe that y'all have to set up?
Well, we're, we're hoping, we're hoping it'll probably be a couple, three months, in Geneva, it was like two months, because we had a church there that was on fire, ready to go, but, uh, it, it'd take, it'd take, it may take three months or so to, before, well, first I gotta know that we got a facility, and then, then we go from there.
Okay, good, thank you. Thank y'all so much for being here.
Thank y'all.
Yes, sir. All right, moving on the agenda, we have nothing under old business, we'll move to new business. Uh, the first item is consider an application for retail beer license for Legacy Food Mark II, and allows retail liquor license for Legacy Package Store. Commissioners, page forty through forty-nine are your documents related to that request, and this is, uh, this is a store located in the Kinston, Alabama community, uh, Highway one thirty-four, so, you have anything on that you wanna share with us, Kenny?
I know nothing about it, where's his name?
Highway, Highway one thirty-four, it has a Kinston address, but it's, uh, I guess it's, uh-
It was the Caroline?
Yes.
Okay, I know they've sold it.
Uh, it's one page over, I think, on forty-three it shows.
Yeah.
It's on top of forty. Well, we have this paperwork that's, uh, provided by the ABC Board, so they've done all of their, all of the due diligence on it, and it comes to us after, after all of the due diligence is completed, and the background checks are done, and so it's just presumed us for consideration. This is like a convenience store, or is this a actual? Well, it's a, it looks to me like a convenience store, and they have a package store as part of that convenience store.
They doing that, they don't want it baby, and they don't, you know, they already was a, a electric store there. I don't see any issues with it, and they already operating there, and that's part of the business.
They had cheapest gas in the county a couple weeks ago.
Yeah.
All right, is there a motion to approve this then?
I'd make a motion.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Motion and second, emails, have any questions or comments on it? If there are none, we'll vote all, if ever say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Past week and, uh, next item is consider retroactive approval for the emergency purchase of a tire, of a tire for the Sheriff's Department. And let's jump down to D, and that's consider re- retroactive approval for emergency purchase of tires for the Engineers Department. We're having the same issue, it's an ongoing problem, primarily, occasionally, there are other kinks thrown in this, but generally- but generally it's that, uh, state bids or local bids or, uh, the, the, the provider, the supplier, the successful bidder's not able to fill the order because of, uh, supply chain problems. That is a significant problem, and we fill it almost every meeting here when we consider these tire approvals. But it, uh, I mean, this has become routine. Commissioners, before we even call for a motion, any of you have a question on this? You, you have the documentation. I think you got it last night. Had a chance to review it. Anything in particular you wanna ask about? Or if not, is there a motion to retroactively approve these, uh, emergency purchases?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Make a motion. There's a motion. There was a second. Uh, if you may have a question. Department heads, y'all wanna tell us anything about these? We're good to go.
Our is package tires for ours to run.
Yeah. Just an odd equi- piece of equipment, and yours was just, uh, somebody in emergency.
One of our vans went down, took it to the tire shop, and they did not have a state bid tire in stock, and it would be a while before they could give one.
So. We do have a motion in second. If there's nothing else, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Alright, those are approved. Uh, item C is a solicitation of bids. And why don't you just come up with one? I think this one's under you, and, uh, we put you on the spot. Uh, solicitation of bids for seed fertilizer. Anything in particular you wanna tell us about there? Are you just asking for approval?
Just for approval. Uh, Russell with the, uh, co-op had the bid previous so they, they couldn't, uh, keep the, the prices as they were.
Couldn't renew it.
Just things are going up, and, uh, that's reason for the solicitation of these bids.
Is this, uh, what, what period of time are we asking for on this bid?
I think it's six, maybe six months.
Okay. Is there a motion to, uh, approve solicitation of bids on seed fertilizer?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
There is a motion in second. Uh, usually these do have a designated time. Are we, uh, asking the supplier to, to stay committed through the designated time or is the change just so much, we're just having to?
We're just having to, they, they have to.
They can't fill it.
They just surrender, they just surrender the bid, basically, um, because I think this is happening quite a bit.
Alright, we'll, we'll review that. It's happening more and more. We need to make sure we're in compliance with state, state law on that. We need to be in compliance and make sure we're, uh, just working closely with them so that, uh, otherwise the whole bid process is null and void. It's, it's, it's worthless if you can't enforce the delivery of a product. But I know we're in extremely.
Well, it's running out on, on time. It's not the fact that it's, 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 it's due. It's, it's due for renewal.
This one is due.
This one's, I think, due for renewal, yes.
We just need to, we've had some that were a little bit questionable. We just need to work closely on that, make sure we're, okay. Alright, uh, is there a motion to approve solicitation of bids on seed fertilizer?
I'll make it.
Alright.
Second.
Motion and second. Questions, comments? All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Alright. Alright. Uh, what else do you have to share with us?
Just, just some updates on some of our projects. Uh, one of our seven projects is going very well right now. Um, I hope if rain doesn't get us this week, we could be actually finished with the majority of the dirt work on that first section we've got opened up. So we're getting ready to put some base material on that and get it grashed and then move possibly on to the next section. Um, our point A project, they're actually gonna start tomorrow on, on, on the leveling of that project tomorrow. I'm gonna put about three hundred and fifty tons out on that project, and then, um, on the eighteenth, on the week of the eighteenth, they'll start back with their, uh, surface treatment of that road. So that project will be kinda, be through hopefully within, within just a couple of weeks.
Will I start the leveling? Will that close the road completely or will it?
It'll be, it'll be a moving, it'll be a moving, uh, detour. Not a detour, but a lane closure, so they'll, they'll keep the road open. There'll be a pilot car there going there, so.
When do you, uh, see them starting on Strong School Road? Because I know.
Uh, just as soon as we, we.
School will be starting back four months from now.
Yeah, I got the crew that's doing that, is working on a, a project that are, tore up one of our dirt pits right now. And once we get through there, we're gonna start those pipes, yeah. So.
You have to wait so many weeks after you put those pipe, that pipe in to get it, to let it settle and supple enough?
Typically we do, but, uh, we've been using some flowable field. Um, that's, that's worked well. The one-on-one project we had, we use that on that, on that job, and we're using some, uh, some eight twenty-five B base from, or some, it's eight twenty-five B base from Birmingham that's been working well with, with us too. There's not much settlement after we use that.
So moving quickly?
Yeah.
Have they finished the, uh, filling in the?
Pipe replacement sold along the point, yes.
But, but going back and filling the potholes and?
Yeah, they did that yesterday. Yeah, they finished that yesterday, yes. But the contract called this morning. They're gonna start in the morning if rain pending, so.
Okay. And there's a, there's a ditch that Mr. Buck Lee's been concerned about. Uh, is that part, is that being addressed as part of the research?
Which one is, which, which area, Buck?
Right there, they, just go around that curve and look, um, at the end of the bridge, the, the first little bridge there.
On Point A Road?
There were Falls Road comes in up there.
It's the same thing like one up there on, I think it's Farm Road there too, where it's.
Okay, I'll, I'll check on that. I'll check that.
Alright, alright. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thrilled to see good, good progress being made on that one-on-seven project that has taken forever. Aren't we? Uh, any reports from others on staff? Kevin, you coming to give a report?
Sir.
Okay. Alright, uh, Commissioners, anything y'all have? Want to keep Tony in our prayers, though he's not able to be with us today, but I think he's doing well from his reports, so, well, that he is. Continue to pray for him. Ms. Attorney, you have anything?
No comments, no complaints.
Good. If there's nothing else, we will entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Kenneth. We stand adjourned.